Pilot program and we also have a quick vote on some licenses. And yeah, that's it. So I would ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution, to the Constitution of our nation, to the Constitution of liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. We are gonna quickly vote on some licenses that still had needed inspections. Yeah, whatever you want to call the order.
Call me in order at five thirty one.
And this meeting is also being recorded and it is on our YouTube channel too, just so everyone's aware.
So we finished up our application process. The building inspector, police department and finance, I mean, sorry, not finance, I was fire department has all their inspections, so I'm asking tonight that the select board renew the following licenses. Tons of stuff to sign. For common vicular licenses, Southbury Rod and Gun Club, Hardwick Vineyard and Winery, also their in holders license, Eagle Hill Foundation, Hardwick Rod and Gun Club, DCTF Corp., the Old Furnish General Store, Hardwick Market and Package Store, Mimi's Coffee House of Hardwick, Hardwick Crossing, Hardwick House of Pizza, and the Whistle Stop Restaurant for common vicular, and for class two and class three auto renewals, L and S used auto parts, Gillespie Car Care One, Gagney's Garage, LJ Ostegui Repair Motor Specialties Company, Hardwick Auto Sales, Regent's Repair, L and L Associates. And there were two companies that did not renew this year. And those are Anderson Restorations and Clemmer Classics.
Because they didn't want to?
They were non-responsive.
Okay. Okay.
Asking the board to approve those following licenses.
We've moved that we grant the common vicular's licenses. All together.
And in holder in class two and class three?
Yes. I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Do you want to sign them at the end?
Sure, okay, yeah, that's free.
Thank you.
Okay. Really quick, this is, we have a surplus equipment list in front of us that went to auctions. The select board has to deem it as surplus so that it can, just for people work matter, if we could approve this list that Marty gave us for surplus.
Can we read it?
Sure.
Nineteen ninety-eight trackless MTST tractor, trackless sweeper, trackless tires and steel rims, trackless snow blower parts, tailgate poly tank, Meyer Sander, thirty C YD Packer body, nineteen eighty-eight Elgin Pelican Sweeper.
It's an eighty-six.
Eighty-six. Nineteen eighty-six Elgin Pelican Sweeper, nineteen ninety-nine Crown Vic, police interceptor, two thousand and two Dodge Ram, fifteen hundred pickup truck, and a nineteen eighty-seven Oshkosh Dumper Sander combination. I move that we put these out for surplus auction.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Thanks. Now we get off the pilot program.
We actually have one.
Oh, you did?
Okay, so the copy that Justine just handed over to us is, you know, Phil drafted this and then it went to town council. Town council made notes on it and this is a combination of that. So their, their comments have been implemented into this new copy that we're looking at tonight. Have you guys had a chance to go over it and?
As a board?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Do you have comments individually then?
Well, I guess we could probably start with, I just want to get what some of the change or, so I have, I have one that was sent out a week ago. That?
That might be the same one.
So, one of the changes is they wanted to define what tax incentives. So on the, on the third page, third paragraph down, says this policy shall apply to all nonprofits that are classified as exempt from taxation under general law.
Yeah, looks like.
It's the same version.
Okay, all right, good.
Sorry, I have to change my mind.
So, first of all, question I wanted is how many nonprofits are in Hardwick?
A hundred and nine properties.
Hundred and nine properties?
Considered exempt. Justine has one.
I have one, do you want to see it?
There's actually, I mean, there's a hundred and fifty-two, but the town of Hardwick obviously is exempt. So it brings it down to a hundred and nine properties.
Does that include state land?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So what are the top, what are the top?
It's double sided too, just so you know.
Is there like a top five of large nonprofits in town that would be?
The state.
Yeah, but the state's not gonna give us anything.
Well, they do.
Then they do now. They're not gonna fall into this policy, are they?
Well, according to the policy, it's written there.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
So it's got, if the state has a bunch, Eagle Hill has a bunch. They are currently already into pilot programs with us now though.
Okay.
Just say the churches, the Gilbertville Libraries, Common Land Trust, Hydrick Area Conservation Trust, I don't know.
That was the early name of the land trust.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
And just to make clear, Kelly, the state does pay us a pilot already.
Correct.
And then the others, the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife comes in on the cherry sheet.
Right.
So we get monies from the state.
A little bit of money for that, yes, okay.
Just, just to be clear, that little bit of money, the exact numbers, if I recall right, from this year were ninety-four thousand for?
On the cherry sheet, yeah.
And what was it, it was a?
That was specifically from the state for the?
The cherry sheet, my bad.
The pilot is like a hundred and ninety.
Hundred and ninety.
All together?
The pilot itself, the Quavon Reservoir is a pilot.
Right.
That's a hundred and ninety. And then, then the cherry sheet was what, ninety-four you said?
I think it is.
So the cherry sheet is specifically the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife?
That we get on the cherry sheet, yes.
And the pilot is, you say Quavon?
Yes, yeah, DCR.
DCR.
DCR, yeah.
So of the hundred and nine properties, how many of them are state? Is it?
Quite a bit. I didn't do that count. I just took ours out too.
Like four thousand and ninety?
Want me to make some more, Charlie?
You could, it's a little attractive, it'd be great.
And is Eagle Hill one property or is there a land campus and then there's?
Do you want to take a look at that?
As is, where the land trust is multiple locations.
Each location?
Yeah, it's listed on the, on the sheet, yeah.
So, not all pop, not all properties are gonna, are gonna really provide, are gonna require services from us if someone picks vacant land. They don't necessarily need school, police, I guess a little fire, they do fire, but?
That's what we've been working under since the master plan days. Get that from American Farmland Trust. In the long term, it saves the town money to keep the land undeveloped. We've talked with the assessors about that over the years and I think that they do. It's never been looked at carefully. And that's one thing I'd like to see now is we do some kind of cost benefit analysis to see what's approved.
Well, from my perspective, any piece of property in town that gets developed is gonna have a negative impact on town.
Financially?
Financially, especially if you bring kids in. So, if you're gonna collect, call it five or seven thousand dollars in taxes and you're paying up twenty thousand dollars per kid, right there you're already in the hole. So, one of the things that worries me, and this happened at a prior town, is that somebody came in, bought some property and then came with a forty B housing development that would've cost the town several million dollars in additional services each year, which would've bankrupted us. We wanna prevent that. The town ended up having to pay them out and it cost them, the guy paid, might've paid eight hundred thousand dollars for the land and we paid them, we bought it home for three to five million dollars.
Chris, does it have to go through the planning board?
What's that?
Doesn't it have to go through the planning board?
Not, not forty B.
If we don't have enough?
Oh, wait, no, it's eleven percent.
If we don't have enough inexpensive housing in town, then we're open to this by law.
Yeah, up to eleven percent, I think is the, up to eleven percent.
So, I'm just trying to understand the policy here where you're looking at revenues, so you're looking at businesses, correct? Or profits that, nonprofits that generate revenue? That's what this, I read, it was about three or five percent revenue you wanted to. So, it wouldn't, so it really wouldn't pertain to vacant land? There's no revenue generated?
Well, nonprofits do take in revenue and it's tied to their 990 form.
Okay.
That's where we're getting that.
But like the common of the mass? How would we, how would we go up to the state for this policy?
That's something we'd have to work on.
Something we need to work on. Okay. And is this?
This is addressing local issues?
Follow that? Well, yeah, but just for the record, approximately twelve square miles of this community is owned by the state of Massachusetts. It's Mass Wildlife and, you know, DCR.
DCR.
DCR. Twelve square miles, not a forty-two.
And there is a push to get some kind of income for the towns that are around the Quavon in terms of us protecting the watershed. And that's an initiative that's coming out of the other side of the reservoir, but I think the small towns all around are starting to get into it.
Yeah. Under the contribution structure, you're looking for a contribution rate of three to five percent of gross revenue?
My copy says just three now.
Right.
The old one said up to five.
And then one of the changes was the catch-up surcharge. Instead of, you know, going back forty years, basically just go back to six years.
And would you apply the same logic to churches? Push into their revenue?
Church helps the community. That's all. And there's exemptions in here and they follow the exemptions.
They follow the exemptions. Where are the exemptions, Bill?
Is in-kind contributions and community benefits, Article Six.
So how is that, how's that gonna be quantified?
Because quantify them will be untrackable. That would be up to the organization to establish. So let's say, an example, they give, I don't know, a thousand community hours working around town, doing stuff, even at minimum wage, fifteen dollars should do it, that's fifteen thousand. So if they can quantify, it won't interact with.
But, and just to make it clear, that you would consider churches to be part of this pilot program?
I do not. Churches are not costing me or impacting this community.
Okay.
Okay, so it does have an impact on the community?
So they wouldn't be compelled to quantify their contribution to the community?
I have a hard time, I'm just gonna interject because I feel like we're making personal exemptions for what one person thinks might be, make it exempt, but maybe I don't feel that.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be a little bit more, you know, black and white, not?
Yeah.
I don't know.
So, I mean, you mentioned how building and additional students, well, Eagle Hill builds housing and they're tax exempt, correct? Right now? And that impact of their staff sending their students to our public school costs us as a community?
Yeah.
We pay for that.
Yes, so there should definitely be some reimbursement for that, definitely. Anything that, anything that's putting kids in the schools should be, we should be looking at pretty hard. Because the cost of public education is so incredibly?
Expensive.
Expensive.
But they're in a pilot program right now to pay taxes on, on the properties that?
Came off the tax law.
That came off the tax law and they don't have to pay on that. But they entered into a pilot program to do, you know, to do that.
Well, I'm just looking at this policy here, how, how do we cover that? That'd be the biggest thing that I think we'd wanna, if there's, if there's a big impact on town services, school, police, fire, anything else, then you'd wanna, certainly wanna cover some of that. Or cover that cost.
Right.
But it, I don't see it spelled out in here to address that. That's all.
I think you'd have to, we'd have to come up with a way to, I mean, the direct benefits, if we're talking Eagle Hill. Eagle Hill has contributed to the ambulance in days gone by and recently a big generator that lets us keep the fire department independent and never asked for anything.
I look at things like they're the, one of the biggest employer, they are probably the biggest employer in town too. I think those are things that you do have to, you know, take into consideration. When we first talked about this, we, we mentioned that each, you know, any of these exempt, you know, properties or, you know, property owners, it would be, you know, it would be that we sit down and have a discussion with them. It's voluntary to do this. So?
Is policy is voluntary or is this a policy?
This is a policy to set something in place so it, why it gets to town.
Yeah, okay.
And then we individually negotiate with, say, Eagle Hill, each Quavon Land Trust, every individual nonprofit.
Would be?
Yeah.
Have its own agreement.
Right.
But it's voluntary?
It is voluntary.
So they could refuse to?
They could refuse, absolutely. That's their choice.
Yeah.
This is more of a, kind of an outline of how you see it working?
And structuring it, exactly.
But I also think that Eric makes a good point about, you know, cost, doing, you know, cost analysis on, what is it that, what is the impact?
Yeah.
You know, what is that number look like? Excuse me, when it comes to, you know, whether it's the fire needing to respond or the, or the police department needing to respond?
As opposed to the cost of a new, of a new family moving in with a couple of kids in school?
Right, that'd have to go, that'd be four.
You know, I mean, Jen and I have talked about this a little time ago and?
Two thousand and five.
I've never seen?
Since oh five, yes. This was brought up a long time ago. We've never, and we got a pilot agreement with Eagle Hill in those days. And we figured it, I didn't see that agreement until 2014. I haven't, I've been all of an agreement.
There was a verbal agreement before that with PJ and Eric that they paid twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And then it shifted to the properties going back on the, on the tax roll per se. Correct, please correct me if I?
And it also excludes the campus.
And then, correct.
Okay.
Well, because they are a tax exempt organization.
Well.
So they pay on the?
Is impacting the town.
They pay on the properties that they own, that people live in, correct?
No.
Like the properties that are?
That we've got off the rolls? Sorry, I just wanted to, what are you asking?
The, the taxes that are paid on the properties. It's the properties throughout town that you own, you know?
Taxes on ten individual homes and four separate parcels of land. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's what, so that's the, it's like a percentage of the actual real estate tax on those individual properties or something?
Yep.
And that's not part of the pilot, or that is?
That is the pilot.
That's what built the basis.
That was signed in two thousand and fourteen. And just last year, they signed another pilot for the sewer, the federments on the sewer.
So if you sell a house, then it comes for tax rolls just as if anyone else sells a house?
Correct. It's a piece of the pilot. You revert to the, at that point it would be on the tax base, tax roll.
Right.
Yeah. Right, the person buys it, goes back on your taxes.
How many students attend our school from Eagle Hill?
I don't have that either. You know? The, the, like employees, childrens, but yeah, I don't, I don't have that either.
That live on campus?
I don't, I don't have that either.
If I could, I think that there are three stu, there may be three students who are not in houses or other things that are paying taxes that are, say, in the dorm or on the actual campus, that's not, that would be part, would be free.
So only three kids are attending this school?
No, no, there are more that are attending the school, but others may live in properties that are paying taxes to the town. Could be something that we rent or one of the taxes, the houses that are covered in the pilot program. But there are only three that are in, on the campus, correct?
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Do we have a total number? Students, could you get us a total number?
I can get, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So getting back to the policy, I think if we had a policy that would cover the cost, the hard cost of the town? Hard cost, so, school being one of them, that easily, we take kids, we got them up, multiply it by whatever that is.
Real soon.
Because from, I think from, from a finance point's perspective is, we're just trying to, you know, we're not trying to make money off this, we're just trying to cover our costs.
Exactly.
And, and certainly with the in-kind contributions that, like an Eagle Hill would offer us for, you know, whatever the, you know, a generator or use of fields or anything else that, that they would do, we've gotta, we've gotta take that into account because it adds a lot of value to the town, to the town's people in the community, which is very, very important. And that should be weighed in, in terms of, you know, there's gonna be some cost, but there's also some benefit that the town gets as well that we probably will have to, we'd have to pay for.
They let us use their facility for our trainings and stuff too.
Okay, that's great. So, I think a policy, and I find it hard, you know, being someone from the finance community is, you know, I've worked in a nonprofit, you take three percent of revenue off a nonprofit and they're not making, they're out of business.
Here's a question, have you looked at their taxes?
Who?
Anybody's. Any nonprofit in town, have you visited their 990 form?
Well, I can tell you right now, from a revenue standpoint, they're not making three to five percent in net profit.
Forms might say differently.
Okay.
So it's worth a look?
Yeah, I'm just saying from, from, you know, maternal business, people, you know, businesses have to tax. And nonprofits don't pay tax, but, you know, they're not making, they're not making ten, twenty, thirty percent in profit. So, I think we just gotta, and this is a, we gotta look at this across the board.
I get it.
If you've got something in particular, it's this.
I just don't think the town should be subsidizing these nonprofits. It should be fair and reasonable.
Yeah, and I think if you, if they covered services?
Right.
Then that's all we need.
They have to look at what they bring into the town.
Yeah.
And I'm a real fan of the land trust. You know, the people that come here and go biking and stuff benefit from the land trust.
Of course.
Keeping the land open is, I believe in my soul, a benefit for the town. So, you know, Eagle Hill does a lot of cultural stuff and I hardly ever go. I did, with PJ, have an agreement that if I had to move the Quavon Estates people out because they're all electric down there, I almost brought them up into the dining hall, you know, for shelter, because all those buildings are independent. I don't have a memorandum of understanding right now, but I can see myself looking for one. So, I'm talking emergency stuff. So, you know, there are benefits to, I mean, there's different ways to look at it and it's gonna be hard to come up with numbers, but I think we should try to do that.
Adam, Chair?
I agree.
May I say something? I wasn't really gonna talk, but I guess I can never not talk. So, when I first originally was approached with this, I was under the impression that it was, it, so it's all, obviously we all know it's voluntary. It was for, you know, new nonprofits or businesses that wanted me to come into town and also looking at the ones that are already here, but I, I guess I didn't, because it's a voluntary program and I think it's a good program, I didn't necessarily think it needed to be, I guess, scrutinized to this level because I really thought because it's a voluntary program and we're putting a baseline in place, setting like, you know, up to five and like putting, you know, minimums in there, I thought, I thought this would've been a good thing overall, not just to single out anyone entity. That's all I can say.
I mean, we've spent a lot of time and effort on this and it seems like nothing went into the previous pilots. Like that just showed up, got approved and that was it. There was no input from the town, there was no discussion, there was no anything.
Council didn't even look at some of them. Sorry, don't hurry.
Well, I, this comes from, I'm not the whole board here though. I'm not a fan of this and I haven't been involved in any of this. So, I mean, I know it's gone off to council, but, I mean, I, I think we need to look at it really carefully. And when in here it says the town feels this and the town feels that, I feel a little edgy with that. I don't think we voted on it yet, so.
No, we haven't. Still up for vote eventually. We'll eventually get there.
It's a draft.
Right.
It's a work in draft.
How would it affect like someone taking a side of the state and East Quavon Land Trust and Eagle Hill? What is the Hardwick Estoros Society? I mean, they have no?
Right, they wouldn't, right.
They have no revenue, they have?
No, not the town, you know. Although it's considered their own thing, but it's?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, that's like the?
And the library itself, I mean, is that, because that's not?
Don't say that again.
Gilbertville Library, that's not owned by the town, right?
It's not, no. You know, the water departments are on this list as well and, I mean, I don't?
But so how do they get scrutinized for that?
Well, that's just it, like, that's why I feel like we're being, we're kinda like, I feel like we're maybe targeting just specific ones and it has to be, they all have to be looked at if we're gonna do something like this. And I don't think that we can, you know, when it says how, you know, what is an exempt and then what are, you know, some, some justifications for being exempt from this? You know, my view on that is gonna be probably different than yours. So how, you know, it's not black and white in here. I worry about that and it not being?
Can it ever be black and white?
I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to think, how do you make this black and white?
I don't know. I don't have the, I don't have all the answers, that's for sure.
Well, at the end of the day, we just basically don't want a nonprofit costing the town and the taxpayers money.
Right.
Carry.
I agree.
You carry your own. That's it. And we can, we can analyze, we can do whatever studies you like, get all the police calls, the fire calls, the ambulance calls, the sewer, and all that. And put a dollar to donuts number on it. Everybody can quantify it and get it.
Yeah, if we go back to the policy though, the policy doesn't, doesn't, doesn't read that way. That's the point of? Yeah, if we go back to the policy, though, the policy doesn't, isn't, doesn't read that way, that's the point I'm trying to make, like, if, if we could, if we could get, if we had a policy that we've got the town hold, either through a reimbursement of money, or reimbursement through some sort of value add, I think we, I think we'd all be fine with that. But what, this, this doesn't read this way, that's, that's the.
This is just looking for three percent.
Yeah.
And then, and I, and I still, it's, it's still in here, I don't, the catch-up surcharge, I, I, I have a hard time with that. Because these are nonprofits, and now you're looking to, to go back, um, six years, I mean, that could really, that could, that could really put, I, I think, a heartache on, on anyone.
You know, the, my concern is the optics, and there are, there are certain organizations that, that make an impact on the town's expenses. But many of these on this list don't. So how do you distinguish, and is it just better to just pick up the phone and start a conversation with some of these people that you think, especially if we can, as a community, come up with a cost of what it, what they cost us to operate these communities? And that way the optics are a lot better, that we're looking at it, not at the, not at these, three percent of the St. Aloysius Church is an example. They don't have three percent, they don't. And the optics would be, who are you picking that church is for? I mean, that, that's exactly what I read here, is, you know, you, it's not black and white enough, so that you can draw your own, own conclusion on what, where you apply it.
I don't think it's a bad idea if they just make it.
It's a great thing here, but it's, how do you, how do you make it black and white so the optics aren't so, so I would say, um, irritated? Because it does look like that to me, in some cases, I could think of half dozen examples where it's foolish to even ask.
I don't disagree.
Can we somehow get at this, set up a, a working group, some kinda?
Isn't that what this is?
Mm-hmm, that's what this is, so, I know, so we have to compile facts and figures, and try to keep it all viewed here, you know?
You're sweet.
The biggest impact, of course, is gonna be the school, so.
But we could take it, we could take it down another road, it could be number of students, number of ambulance calls, number of police calls, number of fire calls. I mean, you could just look at that and say, where's it costing us?
Yeah.
And then make that, pick up the phone.
Yeah.
Say, you, you, uh, you, we had fifteen ambulance calls to your organization in this period of time.
Yeah.
That's the kinda quantitative basis that you probably wanna take a look at.
Yep.
Yeah, that would be something that you're, it's a manual review, or you're looking at it over a certain period of time, and it's negotiable for revisiting, so. If at some point they're putting a lot of, having, taking a lot of resources, but then something changes and they're not, then.
Right.
You don't wanna make them, have them pay for something that they're not, it's not costing the town.
I mean, you could take it, you, the extreme, of course, you, you're plowing the street in front of this place. You wanna take that, I mean, there's certain things that you just, just take for granted that you're gonna take care of roads, because they're open to the public.
Well, and I think there's also, I mean, I, I think there's also something to be said about being a good neighbor too. You know, if, if, if any of these entities, like you said, employ the, the people in town, or, like, you know, I, I just, I don't know, I just have a hard time, um, making it kind of very boil of white.
So what do you wanna do?
Thank you, Seth.
Thoughts?
I, kinda like the, because there's a, a scale of some sort, and I don't know, like you say, but, do you count the ambulances, do you count the students, and, and then, that's where you start the negotiation, and say, yeah, okay, we do this, we do this. Also, we provide to the town a place for, for age, or, you know, we, all these things that may be a town benefit that have a monetary value to them. You know, the church has the food pantry in it, you know, so.
It could be some intrinsic value too, though, you have to take into account too, I don't think you can, you can't quantify what a, what a, what a church does. I mean, it's, it's pretty difficult to put a value on that.
No, I'm, it, but it's, it's a community service that is provided, that has some intrinsic, you know, value. As does Eagle Hill, as does East Quarterland Trust, I mean, and it's hard to measure enjoyment on a trail. It's hard to measure, um, the education of kids that are gonna grow up and maybe do wonderful things in this world, you know, I mean, and that, that, that's their job, is to, is to educate.
What do you think the, uh, property owner of twelve square miles of this community is gonna tell you when you say, give us your, your value that you, you bring to the community? I mean, there's, they're the biggest violator, I mean, of the.
Oh, yeah, oh, you mean.
The state.
Yeah, the state, the state themselves, yeah.
Absolutely.
And, and their amount of money is, yeah, tons of a lot, but it's not.
We've been trying to fight back by, for, for a long time now, unfortunately, um, you know, we do get, you know, obviously we do get some money, but, um, you know, maybe not to the.
We got twelve square miles worth.
Right.
But as a, as the policy is written, they wouldn't pay us anything.
It's voluntary.
Because there's no revenue, you don't generate revenue.
We already get, but there's, the cherry sheet and the, uh, and the pilot from the state is pretty well documented.
Yeah, but this says three percent of your revenue.
But the state isn't, right.
They're not generating revenue for having conservation land.
Correct.
Yeah.
So they wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't even, you're right.
They would, it would fall out of it.
Well, the charge for the water, yes, so then we'd have to take a piece of the surrounding land all the way around for the watershed, it would get complicated.
Well, that's what they've tried to, trying to come up with some kind of justification, and should, the local town, the, the surrounding towns around the Quavon.
That's where the politicians come into play, we can.
Well, we've had meetings with them too.
Yeah, they've been, they've been present at those meetings, I will say, they've been very present, so.
So, to answer your, your question about, do we work on this, I think we start with, we, I think payment lower taxes would either cover, cover the cost of the services we provide, that would be reasonable and fair, I think. And, and we can look at it through either, um, you know, some sort of contribution, what, what they contribute to the town, or they contribute to it financially. And at least that gets us whole, it's all we're looking to try to do.
Right, yeah.
This isn't a profit center for us.
But you're not suggesting that we charge a fee for an ambulance showing up?
No, because we don't, we don't, we don't have an ambulance.
We don't have one, right.
Well, we're paying for, we're paying for an ambulance, then, trust me, we're paying for it.
Yeah, we're, we're, right.
I don't, I don't, I don't, what budget?
The budget.
It's, it's in the budget.
Oh, it's in the budget.
Yeah, it's, uh, Barry and Westboro Field, we pay one of them.
Yeah, so a hundred thousand maybe?
No, it's twenty-five to one and thirty-five to the other, or twenty-eight and twenty-five, or.
It's sixty thousand in the budget for it.
Oh, is that for emergency services?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
You don't wanna get into that habit of, of charging percentages.
No, but you kinda look at, what do you.
No, but you, you look at what it makes, you know, like the cost of it, per se, you know, and, um.
It's not free. Oh, it's not free, but.
Try to put a value to it.
Yeah.
It's almost fair for both, both parties, and I think, I think, I would imagine that, non, the nonprofits that, that are using the services would, would be open to, how do we, to be good ci-, good citizens and, and.
Well, again, to be good neighbors, to be, right.
Good neighbors, how do we make this so it's not a burden?
Right. I, I mean, that was the initial, you know, I think that was your, that was why you proposed it, to, to.
We shouldn't be subsidizing.
To be, and to, to work together, to, you know, to find that common ground.
Yeah.
Well, what's our next step then?
Go to the fire department and get a list of calls?
Well, I think we gotta, we're gonna start with this first. Because it's, it's very much written as, you know, the contribution structure is pretty, this is what it's gonna do. Where I think it's on a, on a case-by-case basis, and ultimately, the contribution structure's gonna be, we would, we would expect, and when I work with you, to cover the cost of the town's not out of, out of pocket.
Just actual, like, costs that, yeah.
Not a percentage of revenue.
Rather than set a percentage.
And then, and then, you know, have a structure where, where, where we're revisiting this on a, on a more frequent basis, because that cost structure could change. And that way there, everyone is getting.
Like an annual review.
Yeah, and everyone's getting a fair shot of, you know, of using more.
I mean, we do that when we, when we partner up with other communities for inter-ministerial agreements, they're looked at annually to see, you know, what we're, like, say, the senior center. You know, it's looked at annually to see how many of our residents go versus theirs, and can we pay based on that, so.
Well, it is listed under section four, provide an annual report on the usage of town services to support the pilot T C, okay? Great review.
We should think about a way to, I don't know how to do this, but try to put a, a value on the ephemeral stuff, the, the joy of the beautiful landscape.
The things that don't have a dollar value, per se.
Or in the church, you know, the, the feeling of.
Community danger, versus.
And community building, and all the other stuff that, so, it's what we all want, it's what the town is known for, but we don't have a way to put a dollar on it. Not probably, it's impossible, but.
I'm just curious, because it would, you know, I'm here, listening to this, I'm saying, is there a not-for-profit that you would like to have come to your town? Could you think of one?
Doctors Without Borders.
Or a not, well, but, but I'm saying, I guess what I'm saying is, you, is, is your, is your policy, is your policy looked at as anti-not-for-profit? I mean, you don't have any control over somebody that comes into town and buys something because they're a not-for-profit, there's no control. So the question becomes, has this become something that's encouraging or discouraging from that activity?
It's actually very flexible and reasonable.
I did, I'm, I'm asking the crowd.
Oh, you're giving me my input.
Yeah. I don't have the answer to that, I'm just making that observation.
Food's for thought.
Yeah.
Medical nonprofit, which we wanna attract, whether they would be.
That's a good one, yeah.
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 You get the prize, Ann. Thank you. Yeah, I think, I, I just, as I said, I have a couple of concerns, um, but I do think that it's a, I, I don't think it's a bad idea to have one in place, I just think that it needs to be.
You know, this, this could be used as a, if written carefully, not that it isn't, as a tool to encourage you, pick up the phone and have that conversation. Instead of mandating that, how many times do the ambulance show up at your place? I think our ambulance crew knows that, and how many times do the police show up, I think they know that, the fire department knows that.
Yeah.
So we would know that answer, we don't need to put that unnecessary burden on somebody else to tell us that. But to me, this document could force both parties to sit down and make, make some headway. But I'm, again, I'm not sure this document in total is a hundred percent what we wanna do. My, my opinion is, pick up the phone, call somebody and say, if you don't want this, let's get, let's start talking, because this puts an undue burden on a lot of people that try to make that, follow that rule.
Yeah.
And if it's all voluntary, everybody could just say, I don't wanna talk to you.
Did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I think, um, because boards change, administrations change, and I, I think having, you know, something down on paper that's harder to change, I think that's probably a good idea, because like I said, boards change, people, you know, people change, administrations change, um.
There's nothing wrong with boards changing and administrations changing, it happens every day in government.
Oh, no, that's not what I meant.
Yeah, well, what do you mean then?
I meant, just to have, to have the policy in place.
Policy, because people change.
But, but then, every time a new board comes in, they can vote this out, right? You can't, this, you just make this for your board. Next election, could be back in or back out.
You can get a majority?
That's right, so, so, does it do you any good?
Well, needs change and circumstances.
Yeah, I mean, everybody, you know, there's, there's something that drives a, a certain agenda, and that agenda changes every administration change.
Very true.
Well, I think if we, if it's a financial policy the town adopts, that we're trying to not, that we want to make sure we cover the costs. That is such a general financial policy, and, you know, it's a guiding light that we, as a town, will try to follow. And then, the policy can, the specifics of it can, can change here and there, but ultimately, we're just trying to, you know, how do we cover our costs? Why break services and cover the cost, you know, in more taxes?
You said it better than me. That's all I was trying to say.
Okay. And then, each board can, as they change.
You know, who'll make a lot of money? Lawyers.
Yeah, that's all, that's all.
That's what's gonna happen. Because there's too many, too many black and, not black and white aspects of this thing.
It could, it could be, it could be two sentences.
It, it, exactly.
That's all it needs to be.
That's what it needs to be. Needs to be, it needs to be a document that drives you to make that.
And why wasn't this done in two thousand and five, if it only needed to be two sentences?
I moved in three years ago, I have no idea.
Yeah, me either.
Okay, but we're here tonight.
Right.
And you put this, you put this forward, which is a great start, so, we have a working reading, let's talk through what we gotta do.
Yeah. Yes, and solutions.
Yeah.
Will it mean that you'd have to have a conversation with everybody on that list, call them up and say, hey, we have a new policy? We want you, you know, the church, or the library, and say, here's our new rules? And they would come and sit with you and negotiate a pilot, is that kind of a, it's thought of that way?
That's the, that's the plan.
Well, they're not, they're not, it's new policy, not a new rule, because you can, it's voluntary.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's not voluntary, they, they will get called in to, to say there's a new process that we're looking at.
Well, and also, there was mention that emergency services, police and stuff were getting billed. Bills were going out to these nonprofits after three calls, and that hasn't been the case, there was no billing. So, there is cost involved in all of these.
Yeah.
And that wasn't happening, for whatever reason.
It did happen in the past.
It has happened in the past.
Well, it's not happening currently.
No, New York.
And for how long, we don't know.
Twenty-five bucks?
My smoke detector went off too many times or something, and I didn't call.
The Harvard Fire Department coming and checking your.
No, what, they thought there was a fire, you know, they showed up.
And they charged you.
After the third one, I think they'll check.
There you go.
Is that recently? I mean, I.
Yeah, I haven't worked here that long either, so.
And you fixed the smoke detector?
I fixed the fire that's making the smoke, it set off the smoke detector. The fireplace.
All right, so, okay.
Open the floor.
Yeah, that's exactly where it was, wasn't that? But it does sound like they have to have the invitation for the conversation. That's what you're really looking for, is to say, we'd like to, we'd like to start from scratch, I mean. But I wish, is what, we're gonna call up the Harvard Historical Society, and they're gonna say, sorry, we have no money. Right, the church will say, so you can't enter, I know it's voluntary, and. And, I don't know, you know, the, the land trust, is it, how are you, is that a, you said revenue, that's based on money they take in? It, it's contributions, that's not really revenue, that's.
It's considered revenue, contributions, grants, stuff. It's considered revenue, contributions, grants, stuff like that.
What would, what would their, what would the demand on the town?
I see you, Bill, I will.
What's the demand, demand on the town services?
They probably get about ten calls a year.
Four.
For lost people, on presence.
But, but why, why would that be the, the land trust issue versus?
Well, they're supposed to maintain their trails and maintain their property. And have it properly marked so people don't get lost. So why should it be the citizens paying for those emergency services? You know what I mean, it's just balance.
I know people get lost, they get lost in their own yard walking around, seeing crimes.
They're going to the woods.
Did you hear about that? I don't want to entertain a ton of questions, but I, I see that your hand was up, Bill.
Well, I'm trying to stay positive, I was a little disappointed that we didn't have the most current material, but.
I think it, I think it was.
There are, there are.
I think everyone has.
I only have the old stuff.
The old ones, the same ones.
I think it, but it could still.
I just looked at a version that he had, and there are things in it that are not ours.
Oh, it's different, okay, I apologize.
Well, anyway, Kelly, that wasn't really my point, my point was trying to stay positive in relation to Mr. Valheim's comment. And some of the discussion we're hearing, you know, we've tried to insert ourselves at times. It's extremely important to acknowledge that there are plenty of studies and surveys that document the economic benefit to communities, local communities. Of open space lands, trail networks, recreational access. And to be honest, I've worked for the federal government and the state government, and I, I don't appreciate hearing that, you know, state ownership would be considered violators. When, you know, they host hunting, fishing, hiking, bird watching, many number of things. And the people that come to enjoy that stuff, they benefit from our investment, including town investment. We just spent several years improving some trails to attract people, and people are using them. The land trust spends plenty of effort and money, their stewardship committee, in maintaining a trail network that people enjoy and come here for. These things result in economic benefits to the town. So my recommendation is, those things be evaluated at the same time that service requirements are being evaluated.
And that's what we were saying, is to.
Because it wouldn't feel fair otherwise.
I don't know the, I don't know how you could put a dollar amount on it, but it has to be considered.
There are studies that estimate rural communities in different places, what, what general numbers for those kinds of things? And money spent in the area of buying food.
Right, because when people come in, then they're, then.
Exactly, buying gas, buying food, recreating, you know, whatever. I mean, we even partnered with Maryland Hospital, for God's sake, for the fitness trail, so there are benefits, there are health benefits, things like that. We can try to look for some estimates of things like that. If we're going to try to evaluate costs in terms of services, we should balance those against benefits, because there are economic benefits.
No, agreed, I think, I think that's what we're all kind of saying here, is that all that has to be taken into consideration. When, you know, having conversations with, with these entities, for sure.
Yeah, Bill, and, and the word intrinsic value is probably, which you can't measure.
Right.
Is probably the biggest one, that, you know, in some cases, like you're, you're citing as an example, of reasons why you would welcome something like this into the community.
Yeah, I was just trying to.
That's why I was asking, you know, could you think of something that you'd like to have that's not-for-profit in this community? There are examples, yeah.
Well, the land trust is one of them.
It, it's hard to convert into dollars and cents.
Right.
You know, but that's what I'm trying to get at, that there are some estimates for dollars and cents, we just have to, I just have to go find them, or we have to find them. You know, that's not counting the, whatever, intrinsic values of open space to the people that live here. And the other, you know, citizens of the Commonwealth that want to come and visit here because of the vistas and views and all that, you know. Good points.
Well, for every subdivision that doesn't get put in because you've now protected that land, you've just saved the town millions of dollars worth of money for schools.
Exactly.
That's what the cost of community, the cost of community services studies all show that. And we have four towns that have been done repetitively in Massachusetts, the latest was not twenty nineteen. I brought copies, if you guys want those, cost of community services studies show.
I would take a copy of that, I would be interested in.
Yeah, I've, I've handed those out before, but I, I was happy to reprint a bunch of these things, just so the board could spread them around. And we have them electronically. This proves that, you know, industrial lands and commercial lands pay their way, because they bring in more in taxes than are paid out in services. But residential lands cost more in services to the town, as you pointed out, than they will ever bring in, in services. So you could almost, you could view conserving some lands, at least in key locations, as avoiding more expense to the town. Whatever it is, we're at thirty-three percent owned by nonprofit in this town. Thirty-three percent. If you include state, if you want to talk to the land trust, you're talking three. Just saying, it's a pretty big number. It is, just so you're aware of it. It is, I'm, I'm pretty aware of it.
Probably also have to back the clean water and the land.
Yes, eight thousand acres. Eight thousand acres, twelve square miles.
God bless them, they need water.
Yeah.
Because of that, we're custodians of the water supply for all of eastern Mass, and we should get some credit and economic benefit from that. And I know certain senators are proposing that, and we should all support and push hard for it.
We need to push hard.
We're working on that.
We steward their water. And we don't have to be so good about it.
You can't pick up the loan and ask them to think better.
Somebody.
They're just not going to.
No incentive.
Do it. State has no incentive. Our legislatures go there.
But we can do that too.
Okay, so, I don't have all the answers for this tonight, but, do you want to make some?
It's, it's two, two sentences, we'll make, we'll, we can run it up pretty quick.
Okay.
Where, where'd you find a magic hat?
We're going to start all this.
I can, I mean, we'll have to.
Well, let's, I mean, let's see what they come up with to, you know, to, to add to it maybe.
Yeah, let's come back at it, with some different ideas, new ideas, and, you know, and.
Again, don't, this isn't a bad idea, it just has to be.
It's a great idea.
I do see you, Eric, hold on. I just think that we have to, I don't know, I just.
Well, let's get some other ideas and boil it down, and see what we come up with on another work session.
Is it something we can just do, we can distribute our comments to people, are we okay with that?
Yeah, as long as no one's responding and having a conversation about it back and forth.
If you want me to compile them, I wouldn't mind doing that either, whatever, that's what people want.
Yeah, we'll send all of you, hold on.
Maybe do that, and then, and then Justine can, can send, send it out to all of us, Eric?
So, the planning board passes a bylaw, it's enforced by the zoning enforcement officer. You guys write a general bylaw, it's enforced by you through the police department. This policy is voluntary, there's no enforcement. I don't understand why you would go through the process in spending time and legal money, towns paying for a legal review of this, for a policy that you can't enforce. What happens when the two biggest nonprofits you're talking about say, thank you, but I'm not involved, have a nice day? It's, it's, to me, it's silly to pass a law that you cannot enforce.
Well, if it's a financial policy, I like that idea.
It's just a guideline.
Right.
A guideline for what? For, I did, the problem is, and I can't speak for this law or the land trust, but if I were them and I would say, well, wait a minute, I don't have to do this, thank you, I'm not going to be involved. So then what?
Well, I mean, Eagle Hill is already doing.
Well, they are, they are.
You know, like.
And, you know, honestly, I don't think they get enough credit for all the other things that they do. But then they're forced into saying, oh, we're not going to be involved, so then what's the image of that?
But they're already doing two pilots that would.
No, I know, but.
Right, but I do feel, no, sorry, no, I, I do feel to a certain extent, and based on some of the comments made by, by you in particular this evening. That you really are looking at Eagle Hill and its use of, of services. And, and I think that if you were to set a policy like this, we're not going to be, the one that you are proposing, we are not going to be able to pay. And we won't, and so then what happens is, is we will become villainized in the eyes of the town, because we won't be, be meeting the need. And we, we've all experienced it, we've all seen it. Most people probably don't know that we pay two pilots right now. Most people probably don't know that we've probably paid more taxes than anybody else in town. Right? Nobody knows that we forgave nearly five hundred thousand dollars in the loan when it came to the SOR. People don't know those things. So if we're to come up with a new policy that essentially negates the existing policies, and we can't meet the guideline that you set. That it's going to be Eagle Hill has undone what it needs for the town. Which is why I think that working with the, the, the entities individually is one way of going about it. But I, I.
I guess in my, in my view, this wouldn't even apply to you, because you're already in two pilot programs, and you already have done the, like you just said. You know, the, the forgiveness of the money and when it came down to the SOR. I, I, I don't look at this being something that you would even have to do, in my opinion.
Right, well, and mine is, well, because.
You're already in a pilot.
Well, and I would hope that when we enter, my hope also is that when we enter in these agreements, that, that, that there's value to those agreements. Right? That it's not just, just for the time period in which it's convenient, but that we've done it all in good faith, and we've entered it. Not that, okay, now this one doesn't work, so we're not going to do this one anymore. You know, but I, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Kelly, and I, and I, I believe what you're saying, but I don't think that that's the intent of the whole board.
I think the nonprofits should cover their costs, if you're a burden on the town.
Well, I don't view Eagle Hill School as a burden on this town.
If you look at the number of students that you send to a public school, and just do the math on that, you run a negative on this town.
And most of those students live in houses that are having taxes paid on them.
That are at a small percentage that aren't even coming close.
You can also look at the students that are here in town, that go to Eagle Hill, that we.
You want to know, there, there's a perfect example, where Eagle Hill is a burden on this town. You get us the number, we'll sit down, we'll talk. And, and also, being a charitable organization, you're not supposed to be a burden on, you know. You're supposed to run an organization, and you're supposed to know and work with the community, not be a burden on the community.
And we do work with the community, we absolutely work with the community. We, there's a list of things that they've all mentioned that we do.
I'm just saying.
Well, maybe it's your opinion.
Let's start with the students, it's not my opinion, it's numbers. It's numbers, number of students going to public school at roughly twenty grand a head, it's just numbers.
Okay, and then you'll have to deduct all the value that we do bring, all the jobs, all, all the businesses that get visited by the people we bring in, all the programming, everything else that gets done.
Can I respond to Eric? Eric, I think the, the policy's really for, do you have a policy in place so when new, if a new nonprofit came in, it would be a guideline of, this is what we're trying to do in terms of meeting the obligation of what your services are? Not, you know, the existing is the existing, you know, it's been going on for, I mean, the policy would hopefully apply to it, but I think from our standpoint, having something, a financial policy in place that would cover anything new, at least, at least you've got something you can, you can go off from a.
Foundation to, yeah.
Well, I kind of get it, but it's still voluntary.
It is voluntary.
And, you know, again, to me, it's all about enforcement, right? The bylaws, you can enforce those, this you can't. And I just don't see the exercise, going through this exercise, if it, at the end of the day, there's, they don't have to deal with it. You don't have to comply with it. And I just find that sort of silly to go through that, too. I mean, I, I think you could do it other ways. I mean, I would ask, has the board ever approached this school about any of these issues within the past five years?
Well, I, I think this is an Eagle Hill issue, it's, I'm just, we're just talking about a finance policy that would be.
Right. I don't think, I don't think any one entity should be, should be, you know. Thank you, my words, words coming. You know, it shouldn't, that shouldn't be the case.
If we get into an enforcement issue, we've lost it.
Right.
That's not where we need to go.
Right.
It's not where we can afford to go, just here, community, work it together.
I think that there are policies in place in, in other towns, and I think that the entities, they decide what of, sort of, what they're able to pay of, of what they've been requested. You know, I would ask, I would suggest that you might even look at the city of Boston and see what they've done with a lot of the universities and, and places that are in the city of Boston. They, they have what is nationally sort of heralded as a, as a solid program, where, and it, it takes into account what those entities, how they benefit the city of Boston. And not all, you know, Harvard University's paying seventy-five percent of what's being requested, not, you know, they're not all meeting the request. But if you're looking just for a, a guideline or a policy, I mean, that's something, you may want to investigate what they do.
So, do we all want to get our thoughts to Justine, have them recirculated and do another working meeting in January?
I have a deep meaning that I just.
No, I just, it should be maybe not, not a regular meeting, I just assume it'd be another meeting where we can just discuss, you know.
Any other towns' programs, I mean, like, was Deer Hill?
There's, there's plenty of them.
Yeah, he based, he based.
Are any of them based on a percentage of revenue? Or are they strictly just pilot negotiators?
No, revenue, revenue is the place.
Okay.
That's all.
Well, I think that's what everyone's having the hardest time with, so maybe if we can really look at that, and, you know. And just do some other things.
Well, they have property tax exempt. Their property tax exempt.
So our meetings would be the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, correct?
Sorry, what were we looking at?
It's okay, our, our meeting's the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh.
Yes.
Okay.
The thirteenth is already getting pretty full, Justin.
Yeah, no, I don't want it to be on a regular meeting night, what about Tuesday, the seventh?
No. Not here.
Tuesday, the fourteenth?
Not here. No, I think it's fifteen, I can do the fourteen.
I can't do the sixth, the twentieth is Martin Luther King Day, we can't, it's a holiday, I already looked at that one, yeah.
What about the twenty-first?
So I, I'm open on the twenty-first, but Chris, are you back?
Yeah, I can do the fourteenth, and I can do this.
We could do the fourteenth or the twenty-first?
Yeah.
What's the?
I could do either.
This is January, but.
Yeah, do you want to do the twenty-first, so it's not two meetings in a row?
Yeah, sure. So are people going to send me their comments, and then I'll compile them?
Yeah.
Yes.
And ship them out?
Yes.
Can you post my meeting?
Yeah, I'll post your meeting.
Do, do you want to do five thirty again, does that work for everybody?
Are you going to start having regular meetings?
I'm thinking about it.
And just really quick, before, before we adjourn, I just want Justine to bring up. So that everyone's aware that we're likely going to owe Zico's for not doing the auction, for costs incurred plus twelve percent.
Pretty much, that's it, so whatever the board wants to decide moving forward, I didn't have the numbers at the last meeting, so I kept my mouth shut. But if the board does choose to go in a different direction or do nothing, what is supposed to cost the town nothing, is, is going to end up costing us whatever they've spent thus far, plus twelve percent. And I don't know if that includes time and.
And I don't know if that includes time and time.
You don't have a number on that?
I don't know, I haven't talked to them, I was waiting to talk to you guys.
Yeah.
Have they stopped incurring costs?
You haven't heard from me at all, I don't know what the board wants to do, that's why.
Because we just paused.
What kind of cost do they incur?
Anything for advertising materials and time, sign it, whatever, plus 12%.
I just wanted to make people aware of that, because.
It's the cost of doing everything.
Because we're going to have to figure out where that money comes from.
So, that, because it would be a breach of their contract.
Just so everyone's aware.
When did you, when, when was the contract signed?
I don't know that, I want to say roughly three months ago, but don't call me exactly.
Maybe not quite.
What do you think?
Was it for, has it been that long? I just, I don't know, my time is like a.
I know.
Okay, that was all I wanted to add to, to the end here. I guess we should, we have to sign all those.
Make a motion to adjourn.
If you want.
Okay. Even if I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, you can make a motion to adjourn, sure. I didn't know, I thought you wanted to say something else, so I.
Yes, 6:42. 5:31, 6:42.
Give me a sec.
Second.
6:41. All in favor? Oh, okay, I'll start on these.
I need to get to you. You can take this one.
River with a saddle.
So, Kelly, I was breaking for.
Last time she said anybody was.
Just run something by, I can't do it, it's the whole, by next.
She said, she said, she said they can't.
So there's a new law.
The actual certification.
And what, there is, we have, um, that can, it's a 100%. And, and less amounts. The heroes are, the thousand dollars for being 100%.
I do like your parents.
Yeah.
The heroes are.
Uh, she wrote a.
To double that.
Do it all day?
I will, because that's the function of overlay, yes, this is overlay. So it would, it would be doubled.
Two and a half.
Where it turns the exceptions, double the amount that we have.
Yes, I'm trying, I'm going to take my lunch, yes, I will be here, all right, help me out. Can I bring a swab?
No.
Don't do it like, it's very contagious. Yes, I'm, we are. Has he emailed us? She didn't email me, she said that.